Paul Smith, Balloonist. And Parks and Rec. Okay, I call this February 21st, 2023 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order, and I want to wish everyone a happy Mardi Gras today. We will have a moment of silence, and it will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Quesada.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Quesada. At this time, I'd like to turn the floor to Commissioner Olivas for an announcement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm really happy tonight to be announcing that from our first commission meeting, one of the first resolutions that we adopted was relating to our behavioral health initiatives and the setup of a Behavioral Health Work Group, a group of community experts to give this commission advice and recommendations on a path forward to make our behavioral health system even better and meet the needs of our community. So I'm really excited tonight to announce that we are ready to announce the members of that working group. And I want to turn this over to County Manager Julie Morcos Baca to announce those names.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner Olivas, and thank you for all your work. I know that, you know, we vetted a lot of people, and yes, I'd like to go ahead and announce the names of our working group. The first one is Bryce Pittinger. She's the State Services Department CEO of Behavioral Health Collaborative. The second is Dr. Bill Weiss. He's the Doctor of Family Medicine, Public Health, and General Preventative Medicine. I believe he's since retired, but he volunteered, he's volunteered hundreds of hours towards our Behavioral Health Initiative. We have Lisa Simpson. She's an expert particularly on the interface with the criminal justice and corrections issues, and she's also the founder of Crossroads for Women. Michael Barndollar, he's the Director of Little Brothers of the Good Shepherd, and he's also the Chair of our Behavioral Health Initiative Steering Committee. We have Tanya Tijerina. She is a Young Adult Court. She works with Judge Leos at the Second Judicial District Court. Pam Acosta, who is our Behavioral Health Initiative Senior Program Manager. And lastly, Gilbert Ramirez, who's the Deputy Director of the City of Albuquerque Division of Behavioral Health and Wellness Programs and Health and Social Service Center. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam County Manager. We're very excited to get this moving forward and working with staff and working on improving our behavioral health programs in Burnley County. So Item 3, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners, yes, we have two. The first one is Item 3A, Fentanyl Awareness Day Proclamation, to be moved to Proclamations as Item 4B as in "boy." And then next, 11A, Planning and Development Services. Peggy Starr appeals the Board of County Commissioners' Approval of Resolution AR 2022-136 to be deferred to the March 14th, 2023 meeting, and a vote is required for the changes, Madam Chair.
Do I have a motion to add these changes to the agenda?
Still moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So we move on to Item 4, Proclamations. And it is with great pleasure that I get to do my first proclamation as a Commissioner on this great county commission, and that is for my friend Paul Smith. And you probably saw an article in the front page above the fold. The balloon fiesta often is because it is such an important thing to our community, city, and county. I have a personal connection as a Parks and Recreation Director for five years in the 2009 era, worked directly with the ballooning community and with the Parks and Recreation community, and so I'm really pleased to recognize Paul in his retirement. So without further ado, Paul, I'm going to make you stand up and come up to the mic, and I will read our proclamation to you. Whereas Paul Smith was the Executive Director of the Albuquerque International Balloon Fiesta, Fiesta 1997 to January 30th of this year. And whereas Paul began his association with the balloon fiesta as a pilot in 1982, and he still flies balloons today, usually placing in the top 10 of the Quad A Flying Events Competition. And whereas during Paul's 26-year tenure, many improvements were added to Balloon Fiesta Park, including a fully grassed launch field. And the Parks and Recreation Community and the ballooning community are, some of them are here today to celebrate the value of that balloon fiesta park. And whereas, under Paul's leadership, the Albuquerque International Balloon Fiesta has continued to be the premier ballooning event in the world and Albuquerque's most popular tourist attraction. Whereas Paul was the recipient of the Albuquerque International Balloon Fiesta Heritage Award that recognizes individuals who have made significant and longtime contributions to balloon fiesta. And whereas Paul Smith was inducted into the Balloon Fiesta Hall of Fame in 2022, now therefore be it resolved that the Burnley County Board of Commissioners wishes to acknowledge and congratulate Paul Smith for his outstanding leadership of the AIBF for the past 26 years, and we wish him the best in his retirement. Done this 21st day of February 2023 in Burnley County, State of New Mexico. Thank you.
Is it appropriate to say anything?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, most people don't want me to talk when it's possible, but thank you. I appreciate everything the county commission and the county has done for ballooning and balloon fiesta over the years. I'm happy to also announce that there are several people from the Balloon Fiesta Board here. Our President, Judy Nakamura, and two board members, Ty Young and Jim Garcia, are here. And if I recognize them, I have to recognize my wife, Beth Wright-Smith, and my daughter, Taylor Duffney, who are here as well, so trying to help me accept the honor. It's amazing what you can do if you just stay all the way with good people around. So thank you very much, and I urge you to continue to support balloon fiesta and ballooning, in particular over a landing site issue, because landing, we all kind of forget that when the balloons launch, they have to land somewhere. And if we don't have landing sites, we won't have the balloons. So thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you, Paul. You come forward, and I'll give you your proclamation.
Let everybody get it.
Yeah, sorry. Oh, Walt. It's okay.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you all very much. Ballooning's in our blood here in Albuquerque and Burnley County. Okay, so I will move on to Proclamation B, Fentanyl Awareness Day, sponsored by Vice Chair Barboa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very honored to bring this proclamation forward. I like to always start by saying that my, when I grew up, my father was so integral in my life. He showed me how to camp and fish, and we went camping every weekend in the summer. And I, you know, he held me to my chores, taught me all my ethics. And I always start with that because he was also lived a struggle with heroin and alcohol in his life. And it meant that he passed when I was 18 from cirrhosa liver, and me and my sisters, and my mom took care of him in those last years. And I struggled for a long time with what it meant that my own things around having a father that was addicted. But I always start that story by saying all the great things that my father did for me as a child and growing up, because too often, it's way too easy for us to other people that are in the, you know, suffering from substance use disorder of the many. And so I've been very grateful to some very courageous folks that you'll hear a little bit from today, families that are currently living with the impacts of fentanyl in our communities. And, you know, I've heard so loud and clear from them that awareness, sharing what they know, having the ability to speak what they've known in hopes to save others has been one of the loudest calls from those families I've been blessed to get to work close to. So tomorrow, where the county is sponsoring Fentanyl Awareness Day, and there'll be a memorial that mirrors the proclamation I'm about to read. There'll be memorials in both chambers of the House and Senate, sponsored by Senator Katie Duhigg on the Senate side, and Representative, our own Representative De La Cruz on the House side. So we're proud to have those floor memorials go through tomorrow. We'll have a vibrant, we invite folks to come out and join our families, and all of us are impacted, right? So I'm going to read out this, and I'm going to actually ask the folks that are here to talk about it today to come up to the diocese, and we have a couple of people online that would, to come up to the podium. Thank you. I'm going to read it out, the Burnley County Board of Commissioners. Whereas Burnley County has taken a stance to aid in combating the epidemic of fentanyl use abuse and subsequent overdose poisoning that has and continues to plague residents of the county. And whereas Burnley County has established partnering relationships with subject matter experts from multiple fields, medical, judicial, law enforcement, community treatment providers, those with lived experience, community support networks, and other governmental entities. And whereas the latest research from the New Mexico Department of Health shows that 2,642 New Mexicans, 40.5% being residents of Burnley County, have lost their lives to unintentional overdose between 2016 and 2020. And whereas, according to the National Institute on Drug Abuse, synthetic opioids, which includes fentanyl, were the most common drugs involved in overdose deaths in the United States. NIDA also notes that in 2017, 59% of opioid-related deaths involved fentanyl specifically, compared to only 14.3% in 2010. And whereas, to bring public educational awareness to the fentanyl issue, Burnley County and the City of Albuquerque in October 22 conducted a Fentanyl Awareness Summit, which included a Fentanyl Awareness Media Campaign titled Keep NM Alive. And whereas, Burnley County has committed to funding the continuation of the Keep NM Alive Awareness Campaign through fiscal year 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners, the governing body of Burnley County, supports bringing awareness to its constituency that February 22nd, 2023 is proclaimed as Fentanyl Awareness Day, done this 21st day of February 2023 in Burnley County, State of New Mexico. Thank you so much, and we'd love for you all to share.
So, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Commission, thank you very much for this proclamation. I have some fentanyl awareness bands for you, and then also I have the flyer. So I am Lisa Sido White, Burnley County. I am a lived experience in that my son had about a 10-month struggle with fentanyl. So what we have here today is, we have mothers that are on the line, and then we have our mothers here as well. But we're very fortunate and very for the support of Burnley County, and there are other counties that also have our support. And we're ready to present in Santa Fe as far as the awareness, and also just to educate our community to the dangers of fentanyl in our community. As of today, I got notice that of the drugs that are confiscated at the Drug Enforcement Administration, three out of five, three out of five counterfeit pills are laced with a potential deadly dose of fentanyl. So three out of five in our community, so.
Thank you. I come here today as a mom and as a grandmother of a beautiful little girl, of just family that's struggling with fentanyl addiction within our household. I come here to put a face to the pain and to the struggle, and to show you that we're real people, we're real people that look just like you do, and we're a part of your community, and we're hurting because our loved ones are hurting, and we're asking that people recognize them as individuals that don't want this life, who are struggling and hurting and need help, but they don't know how to get it. I come here as a mom, asking you to see my pain and to feel my hurt and to help me fight this fight within our community, within our households. Because if we don't fight it together, we're going to lose.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Commission, thank you for sponsoring this proclamation. My name is Fran Martinez Romero, and I too am a mom, but I'm also a Burnley County employee. I have been for 20 years. And exactly what Tanya said, I never thought I'd be in this position, and I am. And my son is almost two years sober. He lived in active addiction for seven years, and it was pure hell. And even though I work for the Department of Substance Abuse Programs or Behavioral Health Services, my husband's an addiction specialist, we threw our hands up in the air because we didn't know what to do. And we come to you today to, and not to you, but the legislature, the senators, and ask that our loved ones be treated with love, integrity, and respect that they deserve. So thank you for sponsoring this proclamation. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, we have some family members that are on the line as well.
Julian, you want to call the presenters?
Madam Chair, we have Antoinette Baldonado, along with Terry Miraball, followed by Alicia Montoya. If you can unmute yourselves.
Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chair members, this is Antoinette Baldonado. I just wanted to say thank you for having me. I am a mother, and I am currently just here looking for the support. I have a family member who is struggling, who is struggling with fentanyl. I have a friend who's daughter's struggling with fentanyl. I also have another friend who's family member just passed away last week from fentanyl. And I am here to support in any way possible to hopefully find ways and, you know, and the support we need to find solutions to hopefully end this, you know, this epidemic that we're currently faced with. And I thank you all for hearing me, and I appreciate everything that you do for our community.
Thank you. Thanks, Julian. Terry, or Alicia, or Lupe?
Hello, next, I'm Terry. This is Terry. My son passed away from fentanyl on October 19th, 2022. It's just been four months. Really hard. We're trying to, you know, we're trying to have people understand where we're coming from because we didn't expect this. He did dabble here and there, and it started in high school. Like how he told me, Mom, all kids dabble, but, you know, he ended up getting addicted and through rehabs here and there and sober livings. Then in April 22, he came back to Albuquerque and got a job, and he was really proud of his job. He was really, he was doing very good, taking care of senior citizens and an assistant living. And he, his goal was to get better, and he was getting better, and we're so proud of him. And then he got enough money for his apartment, and he only had his apartment for two short weeks where he was found deceased due to a fentanyl overdose. And, you know, the hard part here is being a parent and not even being able to say goodbye to your son and not being able to even see him, you know, when, and the next time you see him is in the viewing, when he's cold as ice, and then you bury him or cremate him, because I have him right here, you know, next to me. But thank you so much for listening to me, and we just need to, you know, just create those laws that hold those people accountable and just, just everything that needs to be done so that way there will not be other victims out there, and you don't have to live my pain. And I thank you so much for your time, I appreciate you all, and God bless.
Thank you, Terry. Lupe, or Alicia?
Miss Alicia Montoya. And I lost my daughter February 16th through the 18th. She was, we found her on the 18th, but they said she could have been dead for two days. My daughter was a wonderful daughter, she was a beautiful girl, she was a happy girl. She danced ballet folklorico, she gave to the homeless, she would get up in the middle of the night and take her cousins to go pass out blankets off the central because they needed it. But she got hurt at her job. She worked the state, taking care of the mentally and physically challenged. She was working there when she got in, she got hurt, and she had to do surgery on her knee. She went to the doctors, and she was going there for pain. She was going to this one physician who was giving her medication, which is opiates. I went to take her to the doctor one time, and they had closed the offices. And we found out later that the offices were closed because the doctor on Wyoming was giving out opiates to anybody. So the business was closed down, but unfortunately, my daughter was addicted. We lost her. When we found her, when my son found, because she used to call me every day, so after two days of not hearing from her, my son and I went to go find her. My son found her in her home with a pillow on her face. When we tried to find out what happened to her and if somebody had killed her, because we couldn't find, understand why there was a pillow on her face, the policeman told us, oh, that's normal with addicts. I don't believe that any longer, I think she, somebody was there with her when she died. We need to teach our children, we need to open their eyes, we cannot hide this from our young ones. Most of the time when people found out that my daughter died of an overdose, I get that look, that look of, oh, she was an addict, the shame, the unbearable shame that they give us. And so we don't have anybody to talk to, we don't know who to go to, we don't know what to do. Because I searched, we found NA, which was wonderful for her, but it was in the middle of COVID, so we couldn't find meetings, so she stopped going. The medical, I was told to just give up on her. I was told by several organizations, it's her, she has to make the decision, she has to make the move. You cannot help her, don't help her, let her hit rock bottom. How, as a mother or a father, can we watch our children hit rock bottom? That's not an option, so we need to give options to our families. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Alicia, I'm sorry for your loss.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Lupe Salazar, and everything that you've heard is raw and real, and it's true, and it's so heartbreaking. I live in Chimalo, I was born in Espanola, and I feel that I need to hold my county accountable. We've struggled with the opioid epidemic for decades, and no one gave, I cuss so much, forgive me, no one, it didn't bother the nation, it didn't bother the state, the county, the city, until it started happening in well-to-do states. When the COVID epidemic hit, we knew, we knew that there was no heroin out there. And these blue pills started rolling in, and cheeks were turned the other way. That stigma, that discrimination is what is killing our families, our loved ones, our destroying familia. And that's where I, I say my county, I know that that probably sounds harsh, but we're small enough to where we should have addressed this instead of stigmatizing it. Right now, I am raising my littlest granddaughter. She was born this past June. She was in the hospital 33 days because of the stigma at the hospital in Alburkerke. No one would call, no one would do anything until they couldn't do, you know, until they needed to get rid of her. She was there 33 days. And, you know, unfortunately, my son is, you know, my son was not the first addict, and unfortunately, he's not going to be the last. But we need to educate the educated individuals, because we have people here in Espanola saying, they have a choice, they want to do this, they don't want to get better, they don't understand that this fentanyl, these blues do something much more to the psyche than what the heroin did. And so it's not, it's not going to be easy. It's, I don't know anyone that has gotten off of fentanyl and is a productive citizen. All I can think, all I feel with my nonprofit that I founded because of everything going on is that we just, you know, for the moment that we have them here, we need to take care of them and love them as much as we can. Every day, I get up and I look for my son, just to make sure he made it through the night. When I found out about the fentanyl, because I, I mean, I asked me about heroin, I've studied it for the past, you know, 18, 19 years, but when these blue pills came in, I knew nothing. And I remember telling my son, you know, que bárbaro, mi hijo, you know, you're not even loyal to, you know, to what he was doing. And he goes, Mom, there's none. He goes, you can't find heroin anymore. And I went to individuals in my community, and I told them, if we don't have it out here, there has to be some in the pharmacy. How can we not help our families? I mean, we give them the Suboxin, the Methadone, the Subudex, we give them, you know, prescription medications. How could we not have helped? All these people literally were poisoned. They took it and they, you know, and we don't have them anymore. You don't come back from, you know, the families, don't just get over it. It is something that will, their hearts will be forever broken. And so that's why I ask you, please, you know, solutions, I have a few. It's just that nobody listens, and where I come from, it's not what you know, it's who you know. We live in a very politically bad area where, you know, I've had individuals, if you don't feed the birds, Lupe, they'll go away. And I told him, señor, con respeto, if we don't feed the birds... And I told him, señor, con respeto, if we don't feed these birds, they will die. And what's going to happen to our community?
Thank you, Ms. Salazar. We appreciate your, your passion. Thank you. And next we have Kelly Op.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak at this hearing. I lost my son, William Austin Burnett, a few weeks before his 26th birthday. He was poisoned with fentanyl and he died alone in his apartment halfway across the United States in Michigan. He had been sober for almost a year. He moved to Michigan to get away from Albuquerque because of the intense drug scene. And he just felt that he could not get away from the drug dealers that were stalking him at his job and everywhere else. So he thought it was the best thing to do. And unfortunately, when he got out there, he was part of the lockdown. And once he was locked down in his apartment, they took away everything that he had, his meetings, the gym, his family and friends, being able to go, you know, and, and meet with people that were like-minded. It's a horrific story and I wouldn't wish it on anyone, but my son was a victim. And I think the most important thing I can leave you with is who my son really was. So that when you imagine him in your mind's eye, you don't look at him as a degenerate, a junkie, a drug addict. It was none of those. My son was William Austin Burnett. He was a beloved son, grandson, brother, cousin, and devoted uncle. He was a United States Marine, an athlete, an artist, and a DJ. He had passion for sharing his love of music and art and he spent hours composing songs on the piano and keyboard. He wrote pages of poetry and poured his heart into his paintings and sketches. Often valued his family above all and adored his nieces and nephews. He was a sweet, kind-hearted young man who was forever trying to help those in need, those less fortunate and those forgotten. He was very handsome and chivalrous to a fault, but he was passionate about protecting everyone he knew and loved. His kindness and compassion extended to his friends and strangers equally, never hesitating to stand up for anyone. He was the life of every party, always wearing a smile and making everyone feel special. He was an athlete competing in baseball, football, basketball, track and field, and rugby. He was the kind of son who testified against people that shot the person sitting next to him at a party and then said, days, sitting up all night long by my front door because those people were stalking me. He had a lot of guilt and shame and he worked so hard to overcome that. And he was doing great. In a moment of depression, he drank too much and ultimately called the dealer. And heroin was his last drug that he was struggling with and had gotten clean from. The dealer dropped off heroin, which turned out to be 100% fentanyl. My son died within a few seconds. And that small stumble ruined our entire family. It is shattered. He was my own son and all the hopes and dreams I had for him are dead with him. I want justice. I want things put into place so that other families don't have to go through this godforsaken, gut-wrenching pain that I live every day. I appreciate so much Commissioner Barboa and this proclamation means a lot to me and to my family. And I hope that a year from now, we will have made so much more progress. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I'm so sorry for your loss. That is our last speaker. Commissioner Barboa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all to the courageous voices that are willing to share your pain and the hopes for others. Together we're building the, you might keep N M alive and want to do this year, work year round. So thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, item five, we have recognition of selfless seniors. Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is something that I find special that I get to do every year. As you know, I, I come from working with YDI and the gang intervention programs when I was younger and, you know, we always found ourselves always worried about the 30% of the kids that aren't, aren't really doing what, what we, what we, we ask them to do, but we, 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 we always seem to fail. That great 70% of our kids who are, you know, they're, they're rising stars, they're, they're, they're selfless, they, they care about the community, they care about their city and their state. And they do it because that's who they are. They don't do it to come here once a year and be recognized by me. They do it because that's who they were born to be. And we know that these young people in front of me today will be the leaders of this state in the future. They will be the commissioners and the counselors and the senators and the people who really want to make systemic change for the community. And so I'm extremely honored and proud of these selfless seniors. They already have their certificate, but what I'll read is what we have in our, in our recognition. If I mess up your name, I apologize now. And if I misspeak some of these words that I only say once a year, I apologize that for, apologize that for right now. So, a senior of the Albuquerque Public School has dedicated themselves to community service, kindness, and inspiring their peers, recognized in 2023 for positive difference they have created in their community. You are known as selfless seniors. Your service to the community includes invaluable time and energy and making a difference without expectation or need for recognition. You and your peers have made immeasurable differences in unique and special ways. Your service represents the philanthropic, I'm seeing that's the word I was going to, spirit of the students of Albuquerque Public Schools and encourages each citizen to follow your example of kindness and community service. We thank you for your dedication to the community of Bernalillo County. Present this day, January 21st, 2023, Ava Stratton, Roslyn Chavira Morales, Rebecca Thomas, Ezekio Romero, Myra Lacy, Matthew Marcus Henderson, Harmony Jenkins, Michael Lopez, Olivia Withrow, Enrique Nunez, William Wertz, Tanya De Vargas, Zoe Baca, Mariel Leon Lascano. And we'd like to thank Frank Frost, Frank Frost Photography. He, he donates their picture and I don't know if you use it for your senior picture? Is it your senior picture they give you? Kinda? Or it's just, it's just another picture? Okay. Well, they give you a free picture, but he does it every year. And so we want to honor Frank Frost, your vision and dedication to the creation and longevity of the Selfless Senior Program of Albuquerque Public Schools. 15 years ago, you approached Albuquerque Public Schools with a plan to honor high school students who served important causes and assist those in need in our community. Each year since Frank Frost Photography has donated the portraits and images for the Selfless Seniors Program that allows Albuquerque Public Schools to celebrate these students throughout the district. These portraits are shown at the schools, businesses, and in the Albuquerque International Summit port. Each display encourages the citizens to selflessly serve our community. Your service represents our philanthropic spirit of the Bernalillo County community and inspires citizens and students each year to follow these examples of community service. So we present this also to Frank Frost on February 21st, 2023. Congratulations. So if you wouldn't mind, you say a few words?
Yes, please. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, and fellow commissioners. I am speaking because I am proud to represent these selfless seniors here who, as you know, selflessness means sometimes quiet. And so they're too shy to come up front and speak, so I'm honored to do that for them. I am Shannon Barnhill. I'm the Executive Director of the APS Education Foundation. We are the nonprofit arm for Albuquerque Public Schools. And, you know, as Frank would say, you know, like you were mentioning, these are not those who get recognition for being the quarterback or the valedictorian. These are true kids that are the highlight of giving back to their peers and without any expectation of praise. And we tell each selfless senior that they represent their, not just their respective schools, but the philanthropic spirit of all students that grace their halls. We tell them they also represent the school district and its entire student body and inspire acts of service in underclassmen, middle school students, elementary school students. Now that we can tell them, but because of this proclamation that you gave them today, they also represent the generous spirit of Bernalillo County. And they remind us all that we can make time to give to those in need, champion an important cause, give voice to the voiceless, and in that spirit, we can make our county a better place to live. And I want to just thank these 14 amazing soon-to-be graduates. And I just thank you very much for recognizing them and we look forward to seeing what they're going to do for our future.
Yeah, come on up with, and we're going to take a big group shot. And then you can put that in your drawer somewhere. It's a very big group shot. Let's see. I'm going to ask you to come to this end. I think we'll be, get everybody in that way. A little more, scoot, scoot in a little bit.
You guys can zig that.
That's good, good, good. There we go, here we go. Let's take a few, three, two, one. Thank you.
Well done.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Thank you, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you all. Thank you, Commissioner Casada. Onto agenda item six, public comment. Before we hear public comment, oh, we will hear communication item 5A first.
5A was, was the selfish leaders.
Okay, I'm sorry. There we go. We just did it. Sorry about that. Yes. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm Kate Becker. I know most of you. I'm the CEO of UNM Hospital. I'm happy to be with you tonight. You do have our quarterly report in your packet. I just want to mention a couple of points that will be familiar to some of you from previous quarters, particularly regarding the financial performance of the hospital. The hospital is running as of the end of December at a $23 million negative margin. That's about 2.3% negative, for those of you who are interested in the math. And we continue to see drivers that are primarily the cost of labor, particularly travelers and contract nurses. We've been working over the last six months, the first half of our fiscal year, July 1 to December 31st, to reduce the number of travelers we have in the house and also to reduce the contract rate that we pay the travelers to bring those expenses more into line with our revenues. As you know, healthcare revenues are fixed. It is whatever the payers have agreed to pay us. So unlike a restaurant, when you have to pay more for staff, you can raise the cost of a hamburger, we can't do that. So we need to work on bringing our alignment of our expenses through reducing our contract labor. So we will continue that work over the next six months. We do have outstanding still about a $32 million request to FEMA. We do expect that to come in. It is similar to a $15 million request we got earlier last year. And so we do expect that that will be coming in sometime in the next six months, but as all of you know, FEMA works on its own timeline. It doesn't work on our timeline. So that's kind of the, the finance update. Happy to answer any other questions you might have. And I do want to say thank you for allowing us the opportunity to partner with you as we look for improvements in both medical and behavioral health care at the Metropolitan Detention Center. And we've kicked off the work group that will be engaging in that work and we are really looking forward to that partnership. So happy to stand for any questions.
Madam Chair. Dr. Becker, no questions, just a huge thank you for your willingness to partner with us and, and a huge thank you also to Madam County Manager. And having a local provider at MDC, I think, is going to make a huge difference. Commissioner Casada has, has called for that in our last several contract negotiations. And yeah, thank you so much. It's a, you're, you're part of the community and you're a good partner with Bernalillo County and we look forward to expanding that relationship.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Livas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Becker, I want to echo what Commissioner Benson just said and say how excited we are about the ongoing and growing partnership with UNM. A graduate of UNM, a local myself, I just think it's, it's so wonderful to have this kind of partnership with a pillar of our community in UNM and of course at Bernalillo County. So a huge thank you to you and your team, all the doctors and nurses and wonderful people at UNM that live in this community, breathe this community, they, they are this community and it's wonderful to, to have that partnership. And a, a big thank you to our county manager, Julie Margas Baca, for helping grow that partnership and I'm looking forward to participating and encouraging that any way that I can. And thank you so much for being here tonight and for the partnership that we have.
Thank you.
Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And you know where I stand. I'm super excited always, ever since from my time at APS to my time at the commission, I've always believed that if we provide to our own, that we have skin in the game, that we will be successful. And I've always thought that if we can grow within our own state, then maybe perhaps we would be providing services to people in Tennessee and all these other places that we hire to come over here and help us, right? That's how we grow. We believe in ourselves, we support each other, and I believe this is a huge step, especially for MDC and UNMH to, to, to both have, you know, the skin, what I call skin in the game and that we just can't pack up and move back to wherever we came from. There's nowhere for us to go. We have to be successful. So thank you for taking this on. I'm extremely excited and yes, I want to count, I definitely want to also thank county, county manager Julie Margas Baca for, you know, I, I begged for this and so she's awesome. She, 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 it was up to her to make it happen and of course for you to help, help us make this happen. And I'm super excited and very, very grateful. So thank you.
Thank you. And I will just say that the county manager is awesome. You have a fantastic person in that role. You should be very proud of her.
Commissioner Barboa.
Just quickly, ditto to-
Just quickly, ditto to everything everybody said. It's huge and thank you. And just thank you for always the thorough report. I noticed that patients by zip code is included in this, so I just really appreciate that detail and thank you for coming to us every quarter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, public comment. You will have two minutes to share your comments. You will then be notified when your time is up. For those participating via Zoom, you will be muted and moved to the waiting room. Should any of the commissioners have follow-up questions to your comments, you will have an opportunity to answer. Julianne, how many do we have signed up to speak? And please call the first name.
Madam Chair, we have seven signed up this evening. All speakers are present in person. So when I call your name, please make your way down to the podium before you start your comments, if you can state your name for the record. We'll start with Flora Sanchez, followed by John Beltri, followed by Samuel Rodriguez.
Commissioners, we both signed up, so two minutes each. My name is Flora Sanchez. This is my husband, Sam Sanchez. We appreciate the opportunity to provide comment on an issue related to the Gutierrez Hubble House History and Cultural Center in the South Valley, but also impacting Carlito Springs and the East Mountains and Bakkeki in the North Valley. We've been volunteering at the Gutierrez Hubble House for almost 20 years. Burnley County contracted with our nonprofit alliance to manage day-to-day operations at the GHH, so we're very familiar with the property and its needs as well as the opportunities it offers to the community. The South Valley considers GHH as a gem. It serves as a community gathering place, a historical, agricultural, and cultural landmark, and it's the foundation part of passing down wisdom, culture, and traditions from generation to generation. Many of those opportunities, however, are lost, we feel, because the property is inadequately managed. Currently, GHH is under the Parks and Recreation Open Space Department, which we feel lacks the knowledge and special expertise and perhaps even the understanding of the needs to oversee a historical and cultural property. Although I speak specifically about GHH, I feel the needs of Bakkeki and Carlito Springs are similar. Properties are not recreation centers, they are not parks, and they are not simple open spaces.
I have some pictures to share that demonstrate what Sam was going to share.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm Sam Sanchez, and there are many examples of what's going on at GHH, what serves as examples of our concerns. Our site manager resigned in November and the position has still to be filled. A temporary recreation staffer, Leroy Hylos, has been filling in, and he's done an amazing job keeping it clean. In the meantime, the house has been closed many times without any notice. We have received numerous calls to complain that individuals and some groups have driven all the way out there and found the doors locked. Notably, no programming or exhibits have been planned for 2023. Worst of all, the house itself has been badly damaged due to a roof leak that took place over two and a half years ago. We note that the roof has recently been repaired. I've handed out photos, okay, of the damage to the interior walls, which have not been repaired. I don't have pictures of the exterior walls, but they are also damaged. I emphasize that structurally, the house is badly compromised. There is also extensive damage to the exhibits and some of the artifacts. This means that several rooms are not closed to the public, are closed. With so much of the museum closed and with no programs planned for 2023, we are suffering from a lack of attendance and are losing what few volunteers we had and will need to rebuild it yet again.
In closing, we note that we have previously spoken to Commissioner Casada and Enrico Grati about our concerns about this matter. We request that the Commission change, charge its staff to reorganize and create a department that can better serve its three historic and cultural properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Beltri, followed by Samuel Rodriguez, followed by Carlos Benavides.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to change up what I had planned to say. First, I want to say to Commissioner Balboa, that was an outstanding proclamation, and thank you. Can't be said enough. I'm going to start with what I was going to close with, the definition of persistence. I know there's a lot of us that feel this way. I just want to remind each of you sitting up there as well as everybody out here that we're not alone. The courage to continue doing something even though it's difficult and challenging while remaining inspired, determined, and confident that you will achieve what you want. With that said, I want to thank a couple of the Commissioners, Eric and Walt, thank you for reaching out to me. I had a great conversation with you, Walt. I know I'm going to have another one with Eric soon. I hope to get with the other three of you as well to talk about some of the things I shared with you over the last few weeks. I also want to just stress that as House Bill 4, which is the Voting Right Protection and House Bill SB 180 on the Senate side for election changes, moves out of committee and into the next step in the process, I still feel, in my opinion, that there are things we should oppose on that with regards to destroying election transparency, not having access to public records, especially when it violates the current law, federal, state that is in place right now. Also, the promotion of permanent drop boxes, changing one key word from made to show will make a difference. It will force drop boxes in every county where we have 11 out of 33 that don't even have a drop box today. Having the ability to harvest, you know, ballot harvesting, allowing anyone to deliver a ballot on a voter's behalf, the automatic registration with a social security number. I just ask for your lobbyists to support you and your, your.
Thank you.
House and Senate representatives to represent Burnley County, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Samuel Rodriguez, followed by Carlos Benavides, followed by Joshua James Lawrence.
Evening, I'm Samuel Rodriguez. In 2014, I got into an argument with my wife. I can't even tell you what it was about. I could tell you that that argument ended with me being inches away from her face and screaming at the top of my lungs. The next week, I would start what would be three years of therapy and psychotherapy to address the post-traumatic stress that I would be diagnosed with from a call for service I took two months earlier. At Coors, excuse me, at Gun Club in Coors, a man violently abducted his girlfriend, literally dragged her out of the gas station. She was able to get away from her car as he drug her in. She was able to get away. He chased her. He tried to murder her in front of me, and then he tried to murder me. I responded by shooting that man in the heart. Watching, excuse me, killing a man is nothing like the movies. It's nothing like television. It's real, it's raw, it's violent, it's traumatic. The reason I'm sharing this with you is we have 290 deputies, sergeants, and lieutenants and their families. My wife, she knows what sacrifice is. We all know what sacrifice is. And I know you guys say, thank you for your service, public safety will always come first, but it's hard for you to have a true appreciation of what we sacrifice for our job. I'm saying this because we're going to be entering negotiations next month. I am asking you, Commissioner Benson, you asked me a couple of months ago, what am I asking for? I am asking you specifically to find a way to release 2% of your $350 million budget to give your deputies, sergeants, and lieutenants competitive pay so that we could recruit. We are overworked because we're understaffed, and we're understaffed because we can't recruit, and we can't recruit because we no longer have competitive pay. I'm asking for 2%. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Joshua James Lawrence, followed by Robert Body, followed by Ryan Zamora. Robert, if you want to come down, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I'm Robert Beatty. I'm here representing SWEP, the Southwest Educational Partners for Training. And I'm here to talk about guns and gun violence and young people and what we are going to do about it. I'm sick of young people dying by gun violence. SWEP is working with the New Mexicans to prevent gun violence. And they are working to take guns off the street. And SWEP is doing a guns-to-gardens project with those guns that come off the street. So up to date, they've taken 1,700 guns off the street, and then they cut them up into pieces. That's a lot of pieces. So the students that I work with at Robert F. Kennedy Charter School, where I'm the director, have learned how to use a forge, a lathe, and how to weld. So they take those gun barrels and they forge them, and they turn them into garden tools. They take the wood stock from the rifle and learn how to use a lathe and make a handle out of those. So I work in the South Valley, in the unincorporated part of the valley, and on this slatter in between Lake and Barcelona, there's now a big mural done by the students at RFK at our school farm regarding the prevention of gun violence. On the side of that mural, there are gravestones with names of people from Burnley County, young people who have died. RFK is going to add two names to that mural this year, two brothers, a 14 and a 15-year-old who recently died from gun violence. So our students had an opportunity to work with somebody named Pedro Reyes to make these faces, and this is what we're doing with the parts. I'd like to invite Burnley County to participate because the students that are doing this want to do this with more than just RFK. Young people talking about gun violence changes other young people. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good evening. And thanks for letting me run a little.
Thank you. I'm interested in talking with you about your program, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carlos Benavides, followed by Ryan Zamora.
Good evening, everyone. One thank you about the proclamation. I think it's touched a lot of people, and I think it hits home with a lot of people here, everybody up there probably, and a lot of people behind here. But, and just want to thank you for that. What I want to talk about is the Fourth Amendment, to be secure in your person's properties and effects. That includes having to come in here to the Burnley County. As soon as you come in, your amendment, your Fourth Amendment is violated right away. You're being searched to see why? For safety, right? Everybody wants to be safety. But what I want to give is a quote from Benjamin Franklin, and he says, "Those people that would give up their liberties and their freedoms for safety deserve neither." They don't deserve their freedoms or safety because you're giving up your freedom to be safe. That doesn't make sense. You got to be able to protect yourself and be secure in your own persons and properties to be able to be free. To, and like I was saying, when you come in, the first thing you do is you're getting searched. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't appreciate being treated like a criminal. And although I know it's for safety, it's still a violation of the Fourth Amendment. You know, you should be able to come in here, and if there's a problem, you know, and the beeper goes off or whatever, maybe have a security guard go with the person or something because you can't, if a person really wanted to, they can have one of them ghost guns or whatever or something like that, and it doesn't even give a signal in there and still cause havoc. But I just wanted.
Thank you, sir.
Talk about the Fourth Amendment. Remember.
Hello. I'm Ryan Zamora. Met you a few times. I had something planned out to say over the next two minutes, but once again, going behind Sam, I was a little surprised by what he brought up. I'll share a little bit of my involvement in that incident. I was across the river when that happened, and a buddy of mine had to run Code Three Lights and Sirens to try and get to him when that happened, and it was the worst feeling in the world. That's when the real Bravo was slatter project was going on, and we couldn't get across. It was backed up. It was the first time I've ever drove, I don't know, 100 miles per hour the wrong way trying to get to my buddy to make sure he was okay. Months, maybe years later, I was going to be interviewed in reference to my involvement in that, and I was asked by an attorney to review all of the tapes and everything, and there was a citizen that called in. And I was sitting next to my wife, she wasn't my wife at the time, and I started bawling like a baby when I listened to the tape of the guy that worked at Circle K that called in, he called 911 on Sam's behalf. And the desperation in his voice was, you need to get somebody here now. He's going to kill him. And I just, I broke down, much like I'm being very emotional right now, listening to that tape preparing for my interview. It was an awful thing to have to listen to and live through again, so I can only imagine what Sam had to go through. I'm going to try and burn through the rest of this in 40 seconds. What I was going to come up here and say was that as a part of our training in the academy, we're taught not to use hope as a tactic so that we're prepared for situations like the one you just heard about. I've been super grateful to meet with all the county commissioners and several times with the county manager to try and prepare for negotiations so that we can secure a wage increase during this negotiations. And unfortunately, it seems that there is no extra money compared to last year when we go into negotiations. So we're left in a position where we are using hope as a tactic going into these negotiations, and we hope that that money will be there for us to negotiate for. I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. We move on to Item 7, Approval of Minutes. I move approval of February 7th, 2023 Administrative Meeting Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes. Okay, Item 8, Approval of the Consent Agenda. The consent agenda has been published and made available to the public. Therefore, I move approval of the consent agenda. Sorry, but first, Madam Clerk, do I need to move that first and then, or get the items numbered?
Numbers first, then move.
Okay, sorry about that, everyone. Madam Clerk, can you please provide the resolution numbers for Item 8B, 8C, 8D, 8F, 8J, and 8K?
Yes, Madam Chair. 8B is FR 2023-20. 8C is AR 2023-21. 8D is AR 2023-22. 8F is FR 2023-23. J, 8J is AR 2023-24. K is AR 2023-25, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, so now I move approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casada.
Yeah, before we go on to the vote, I just want to thank Mikey Lovato for serving again on the Youth Sports Commission. Mikey Lovato was a big-time wrestler for Wes Mesa. I think you probably know him too, and his family. And, you know, I know he's a busy guy, but he sure loves, you know, making sure that kids like he was when he was young keep him on the right track with sports, and so he really wanted to be involved. I appointed him when I first joined the Commission, and he stuck with me, and he's going to stick with me to the end. So I thank you for the support.
Thank you. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes. Thank you all. We are at Item 9, Adoption of Ordinance Amendments to the County Code. Madam Clerk, can you please provide an ordinance number for Item 9A?
Yes, ma'am. 9A is Ordinance 2023-2.
Okay, Ken Martinez is not here. Am I on the right? Oh, yes. So Deputy Manager Elias Archuleta will present.
I stand before you tonight to present for a public hearing and a motion to adopt a new county ordinance for the Automated Speed Enforcement Program. We brought this to the commission back in December to be published, and I'll give a quick summary. The ordinance's intention is to create an automated speed enforcement program that will be housed in the Public Works Division's Operations and Maintenance Bureau and will work cooperatively with the Sheriff's Office. The intent of this ordinance is to have an overall safety benefit by reducing speeding in critical areas. Those that we identified, we're basing this off of the COGS, most dangerous road segments and intersections, and we'll be focusing on those areas where it's been identified that speed is a contributing factor to the severity of the crashes that occur on those segments of roadway. And our intent is to be able to supplement the Sheriff's Office as they are, as we know, they are short-staffed and are not always able to work the traffic violations. These are areas where between our public works staff, we've tried to do what we can with engineering countermeasures, and a lot of times that we've either done what we can, and those are speed humps and other speed humps, traffic change configurations, and what we're left with is areas that those have not worked, and we're still seeing problems. So we feel that this ordinance will help us and address those situations by providing a law enforcement presence that will be there and be able to issue a citation and try to help that. To this end, to date, we had one comment that came through the Department of Transportation's Transportation Commissioner in the area, and this came as after we approached the Department of Transportation and asked if they would be willing to allow us to put these on their facilities because their current commission policy states that they need to approve that at a commission level on a case-by-case basis by municipality. She said she's willing to support that, but all she asked is that we include a provision for penalty, for an alternative penalty where in lieu of them paying the fine, they can opt to do comparable community service. Commissioner Benson was the one that initiated this ordinance. We discussed it with him, and he was willing to, he's open to including that which we have included in the final version of this ordinance which is presented tonight. And so with that, I would stand for any questions.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Deputy County Manager. And one of the primary complaints that I've received in the last year from our constituents in District Four have been, has been the speeding, especially along Paseo and Unser and Coors and Tramway. And not just the speeding and the danger of that, but also the noise associated with it. So working with Deputy County Manager Archuleta, the rest of the county, and our legal department, we crafted this. I think it's very flexible because there are mobile vans that separates it from the city's plan, so we can move cameras where we need them to be. It won't just be District Four, it can be throughout the county. And also, the addition of community service is actually, in my mind, preferable because this isn't a money generator. It's for safety and noise, and so we've got plenty of streets that need cleaning, and so if we've got community service, that's great. So I just want to thank you, Deputy County Manager, and the legal team as well. This is, I think it's a great first step, and I look forward to making the streets safer. And then to your point, it also does free up time from our sheriff's deputies who, I mean, just listen to the story we just heard, their hands are full. And so if we can free up them, you know, with these automated cameras, then more's the better. Also, just to clarify, these, anybody who has caught speeding with these cameras, it's not just a robo-camera which is just issuing tickets. Every instance is reviewed by law enforcement, and so it, there is a human element involved. So thank you again, and I'm really excited about this. And I'll open it up to questions. Oh, actually, Madam Chair, one more thing. I've received zero negative comments about this and dozens of positive comments from the county, not just my district, but folks have been reaching out throughout the district saying, "Yes, thank you. We've needed this." And also to the county's benefit, they, Mr. Archuleta reached out to the Department of Transportation, which then opens this up to state highways, which means that we can now monitor Paseo del Norte, Tramway, and Coors, which Coors is the, one of the dead, no, sorry, Coors is the deadliest street in America for pedestrian deaths. So-
That is correct, Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson.
Yeah, thank you. So I think this is just, I'm excited about this, and it's, that's one of the responsibilities of government. Provide safety for your citizens as well as infrastructure, and this does both. So thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casado.
Yeah, I just, I just want to, you know, put my support in, you know. I also have Real Bravo, which is a, you know, which shouldn't be a state road, but it's a state road, and so, you know, Ninety-Eighth, Unser, you know, Coors, these are all state roads, and so we have limited, you know, ability to even fix them, right? So we, along with Deputy County Manager Elias, we've gotten some grant money to really improve Coors, so we're working on it. Despite they're state roads, we still have been hustling to make sure, try to make those roads safer, but, you know, I hundred percent support this, and I don't know if you motioned for approval, but I'll second it.
Yes, I did. Motion for approval. Thank you.
Before we vote, we do need to convene a public hearing, and Julianne, did anyone sign up to speak?
Madam Chair, we did not have anybody sign up to speak. Thank you.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Commissioner Olivas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Deputy County Manager Archuleta and the sponsor of the ordinance, Commissioner Benson. I think this is good policy as we're here in government trying to make good policy, and we're looking at our public safety portfolio and the problems that we see in our community. This is a smart way to address this problem in a way that minimizes the impact on law enforcement and allows them to focus on higher priority issues. Not that speeding and roadway safety isn't a high priority, but when you have life-threatening calls for service happening every minute, these kinds of issues tend to fall lower on the priority scale, and this is our way of setting a policy that can address this in a meaningful way for the public. So I'm excited to support this, and I'm excited that this has been brought before us in a really comprehensive way in that it addresses issues with individuals that may not be able to afford the fines or have issues with, they weren't the one driving the car, that kind of thing, as I read through the ordinance. There's lots of provisions in here that allow people to prove their innocence or serve the community in another way besides payment for the fine. I do have one quick question on this, though, just about the fee structure for the vendor. I'm guessing this still has to go through an RFP process and all that, but how does this compare with what the city's doing in their program, or is this exactly the same fee structure that they're using?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, this is very similar to what the city's structure is set up to do. We did discuss this with them in detail on how they have set up. They had a few recommendations, and about the only thing that may be different between our structure and how we do this is that there may be just an inflation escalator that's included in there. But as for how we're going to set up the RFP, it's going to be very similar to be a per-camera, per-location fee that is all-inclusive, so it's providing the hardware, the software, the installation, and more importantly, from what we see here, is the repair in lieu of it being vandalized and such. So all that's being covered, will be covered under the contract with the vendor, so there shouldn't be any unexpected or, you know, surprising costs that come to us, particularly because as these are powered through electricity, we are consistently seeing still copper theft and such. So in a lot of locations, to make sure these are still up and running, they will come in and take care of that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Archuleta, and I appreciate you thinking ahead on this and looking at some of the lessons probably already learned on the city side, and I'm hopeful for this program and rooting for its success, so looking forward to hearing about this down the road.
Any further discussion? So it's been moved and seconded. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that passes. Thank you, Mr. Archuleta.
Thank you.
Okay, item ten, adoption of resolution. Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number for item ten A?
Yes, ma'am. Ten A is AR twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six.
Okay, this is establishing the Middle Rio Grande Housing Collaborative. We introduced this a couple of weeks ago at our last meeting, but they, and it has been in your packet, is an updated version of that original resolution, and I think it has much improved. We've talked with staff, we've talked with our city partners, and I am really happy that what we're trying to do here is a true partnership and collaboration between the City of Albuquerque and Burnley County for a much-needed effort to create affordable housing. And this collaborative will, basically the resolution is an intent resolution. It establishes a collaborative, but very importantly, we are going to put effort into creating a joint powers agreement between the city and the county, working with stakeholders to make sure that the structure of that collaborative works for Burnley County. We are modeling it, and there's some language in the resolution that models it really after a successful collaborative down in Doñana Ana County, where the City of Las Cruces and Doñana Ana County are working together in a similar collaborative. It creates a strong development arm that really takes a look at mixed-income housing with affordable housing, so you create sustainable communities. And I believe that we're heading in a really positive direction. We need, we know that we have an issue of homelessness that we must address. We need to address that, as I said a couple of weeks ago, from many different sides. One of those is housing, and so this is to enable us to do better together, the city and the county, and leverage state funding in order to do that, and I urge your support. Commissioner Olivas, did you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really want to thank our chair for her leadership on this effort. We've been working on this for quite a few months now, actually, since we both started, but the chair has really led the way on this in building some of the really strong partnerships that I feel are now coming to the fore of this. When we look at this, this is a true collaborative, as the chair said. We are looking at engaging our partners at the city, but also engaging our partners at the state because I think that everybody in this area is realizing quickly that this is not a problem we can solve alone. This is a problem that's growing, it's a problem across the nation, and it's not just a problem of the unhoused, but it's a problem of those precariously housed and those who see a significant portion of their limited incomes devoted to housing, in a sense, making their standard of living unsustainable due to the cost of housing. So this is really about addressing those core barriers to stable housing in our community through partnerships with the City of Albuquerque, with the State of New Mexico. The chair and I have been up in Santa Fe, we've had conversations with the governor's office. We're trying to build momentum around this and show that this really is a recognition of tackling this problem in a different way. We do have some very successful housing initiatives that I want to highlight. Our voucher program here under our own Burnley County Housing Department and the leadership there has done an excellent job of managing that portfolio and housing a significant number of our residents. I see that we have representatives from the Albuquerque Housing Authority here that also manages a terrific portfolio and houses a substantial number of our fellow citizens, and it's important to recognize that critical work that is already happening. But the bottom line is, if we suddenly had five thousand new vouchers come on the market that we had to distribute, we don't have the units to house those people. And that's where this collaborative really looks at doing things differently. How do we approach development in a sense that uses long-range planning and a focus on cultivating that development, cultivating those relationships with nonprofit partners and private sector developers, and really building communities, as the chair said, that are mixed-income, sustainable communities? And I'm really very bullish on this partnership. I think this is something that can be a long-term success story here in Albuquerque, New Mexico, and Burnley County, and I'm incredibly proud to sponsor this resolution, and I urge all my colleagues' support.
Thank you. What's your barbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Olivas, for bringing this. I agree. In my two years here, I've been able to work with our very own Betty Valdez, and who is, I don't know if she's here. Yes. Is that you, Betty? Sorry, my eyes are very great. So knowledgeable, I've learned so much about what's possible, where limitations come, and all the great work that our county is doing. I've shared before that as a young single parent, I was on housing, Section Eight housing, and it is what allowed me to complete my education. I worked part-time, and yeah, the, I paid more as I made more to eventually to when I was off the program. And that's what this, what housing vouchers are for, and we're in a place where we're in a crisis. We don't have enough to cover, and even if we had enough, then we don't have enough units, as Commissioner Olivas was talking about. So I just, I'm excited about this because it gives hope for greater collaboration, and really that hopeful, like increased capacity and increased resources, because that's sort of, you know, we're all spinning our wheels, and everybody's doing a lot, and we really need to increase the capacity, the resources, and the work to get it done. So thank you for this, and you have my support.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
The, well, I want to thank you for leading this charge as well, and I just have a couple of questions, though, and I thank the city employees also for being here and appreciate all the work that you've done for the same issue. So what I like is the collaboration, being able to join resources and hopefully create some sense of scale there. My concern, though, is really, I've seen the results of our housing program, and they're very positive, and we can always do more, but we do a great job. We also really do a great job of managing our finances, and nothing's free, and this would cost resources, especially when we hear about, you know, deputies coming forward without any, without any wiggle room in our budget for their raises. And, I mean, public safety, I think that's got to be a top priority. So those are some of my concerns here, is the cost, protecting, protecting our own Burnley County's bond rating, and then, finally, just making sure our constituents are aware. So the, I really appreciate the intent that's labeled here, intent to collaborate. I think that's a great start. I would ask that the joint powers agreement that you referred to, that that be brought forward again so that our constituents can see what this, what this union would look like. And the one thing I have learned about partnerships is that they're easy to get into and hard to get out of, and so I would like to make sure that we really thresh out the joint powers agreement before we commit to any, any kind of long-term agreement.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I think that what I would say to that is that we are, partnership is hard, and even coming up with a resolution that both partners agreed upon the language was difficult, but we are there, and I would say that tomorrow at the city council meeting, a not mirror resolution, but very close companion resolution, I guess I could say, will be considered by the city council, and we've worked with their legal side, our legal side, and I think people are- but very close companion resolution, I guess I could say, will be considered by the city council. And we've worked with their legal side, our legal side, and I think people are satisfied with the fact that this joint powers agreement will really create that structure and will really help us put the parameters on this to protect both governmental entities while actually, though, moving forward in creating something that is, that has that potential to do this development arm, which we don't, we are not doing as quickly, it's hard to say, with housing, because it's not quick. It's a lot of work and a lot of long-range planning, as Commissioner Olivas talked about. So we're really talking about long-range planning, inventory of existing properties, all of those things, but working together, I think we can be even stronger. So I think we're heading in the direction that you're talking about, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the agreement, would that be made by the actual collaborative?
The joint powers agreement will be an intergovernmental agreement signed by the county and the city, by the two partners. So the collaborative will be formed by this JPA. You know, it won't, it won't be in existence until we come to agreement as two entities to sign off on a JPA.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Sounds very thorough, and I look forward to reviewing the agreement.
Great.
Thank you for your work on this.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner, Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just also wanted to respond a little bit to one of Commissioner Benson's points on the importance of public safety and not taking resources away from that critical need to fund another critical need. And I just want to say that I really feel that these are intertwined. You know, we see people getting released from the Metropolitan Detention Center that don't have housing. We see people that are, you know, involved in the criminal justice system and getting on the right path, getting treatment, getting through job training, and they can't get housing, or they're precariously housed. And so it is something where I believe that we have to walk and chew gum at the same time. We have to do both. If we just throw all our resources at policing and pure, traditional public safety infrastructure, I fear we'll continue to sit in the same place where we see this revolving door and we see the overall results don't change. And I feel that's why this is a very strong proposal, in that it seeks to do something differently and address this need in a different way that brings some scale and hopefully some more different thinking to the problem that can help address a fundamental need of human beings, but also a public safety issue when it comes to the unhoused and precariously housed. And I, and I think that we'll, again, to reiterate the chair's point, that we will also see this come back before us. This intent resolution sets a six-month timeline to hopefully have something delivered to us in the form of a JPA that we'll be able to review again and look at the details.
Madam Chair. After.
Commissioner Casada.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, you know, my district is probably 80% affordable housing, and that's the future of New Mexico, is probably in my district, for affordable housing. As you know, the housing on the other side of the freeway is $500,000 and up. My district is $200,000 and below. And so this is important in many ways for my community, how that's developed and how it's done, and what kind of amenities and stuff that follows affordable housing. It's just bigger than just putting in houses and saying, okay, you have houses now, but they have no value, and they have no hope for the raise of value in their homes. I live in that district. But, but we have to do something, right? And I know that we got to move forward, and I know we're powerful together, and I agree with all of that. I'm looking at the resolution, and so it says that we, you know, we received 29 million of HUD money, and that we're looking at that, right? And then you're also looking at asking the state for 50 million. But as I read through this, I don't, I don't see where the, what the city is going to do. And I also don't know how much of that 29 million we're going to take away from our programs to put into this collaborative. Are we, are we just putting all our money in, and they put all their money in, and we move forward, or we're looking at a percentage? Will that be worked out in the details from the joint agreement? That'll be worked out as an equal share?
Well, I can answer, Commissioner, that whereas the 20 million from HUD is for housing vouchers for low-income persons, and the housing voucher money will not be taken away.
Okay.
I mean, what we're really trying to do with this collaborative is create that partnership that can do the development arm of creating these, you know.
So we don't know how much of the budget?
The public housing and the voucher systems will continue, and the JPA is, though, looking at how can, you know, at how our housing authorities operate now and where we, where we can work better together. So that JPA will be looking at the existing resources, but.
What resources they have and what the city has, and then, and then asking on top of that 50 million from the state to help in this? Okay. Yeah, no, if it's fair and equitable across the board, you know, I need to see if this works. We have to try something, right? We have to see if this works. So I agree with that. I just want to make sure that it's equitable, right? That the equal amount of putting the money in comes from both sides, and I don't know who's going to negotiate that part or how that's going to go. So just like Commissioner Benson, I'm excited to see the details, but I will support this.
Thank you. So I guess I didn't move for approval. Let me do that. We've been in discussion. I move approval of AR 2023-26, creation, or the resolution of intent for creating the Middle Rio Grande Housing Collaborative.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? This process stuff, I'll get it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas.
I did want to point out to Commissioner Casado's question there on the funding piece. Again, this is an intent resolution, but there is a section here on collaborative funding where each the city and the county are pledging an initial appropriation of $500,000 each for a collective million dollars together with the intent of leveraging that funding. We've already had some conversations with the governor's housing initiatives and talking to them about ways that we can leverage that funding for some state money that may be available. And then we also have the joint ask, and this is an ask that was added to our capital outlay resolution, and was part of the city's capital outlay resolution, where each partner is requesting $25 million for this total $50 million capital outlay resolution. And I know that Chair Baca and I, and perhaps some of the other commissioners have been up in Santa Fe, talking to our legislators and talking to leadership up there about the importance of that appropriation, and I think that we're getting some good feedback on that, and other sources of funds as well that may be available for this through the MFA and other agencies that have funding for this type of development and project planning work. So to be very clear, we are not touching the existing housing money that's already coming into the county, and this resolution really sets up a framework, but obviously that JPA will spell out the real details of that. So I think it's a very good question.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
Another question or comment, back to, actually, I wasn't thinking about this, but back to the cost and the contributions. I'm glad to hear that the city is also putting forth 500,000. But back to Commissioner Olivas's comment, and I agree that we do have to walk and chew gum at the same time, as long as we do do both at the same time, and not just one over the other. And it sounds like, based on discussions, that there is no money for raises, and so that's not chewing gum. So we've got to walk and chew gum, so we can, we can provide for first-line responders while still taking care of the housing need. It's, we've got a tough nut to crack, and we've got to take care of it. And I'm showing my support, but we've got to get just as creative, just as creative as we've gotten about this, we've got to get the same level of creativity to providing raises for law enforcement. And, you know, creativity is not raising taxes, right? It's looking at budgets and looking at where our priorities are, where our spending priorities are, so that we prioritize based on the needs of the community, not based on our own, you know, preconceived ideas. So, yeah, the dollar amounts. Thank you, CEO of Albuquerque, for putting this forward. It just got me thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Barbo.
Thank you, Chair, Madam Chair, and for this great discussion this evening. I just, I think, right, I was in some of the beginning conversations. Thank you for your leadership, Madam Chair, in taking this on previous to this year, at the end of last year. And, you know, the hope is that this can be a creative solution that can actually generate funding, that can, you know, we leave a lot of federal money at the table because we're not that, we don't have that way to apply and do the work. I also just think of all the work that has been led around some of the housing subcommittees, where there are really great and innovative ideas that are also thinking about how we create cooperatives or new ways for folks to actually build wealth, that homeownership isn't always within everybody's grasp. So can we create rentals and cooperative housing or other ideas? I don't really know them myself, but I know smart people are talking about them, and I just think this opens up the opportunity and capacity to get that. So again, hopefully the costs are being and revenues being generated through the project to creative solutions, and yeah, that's all I wanted to close with.
Thank you. With that, I urge your support, and I call for a vote. All those in favor? Is anyone saying aye?
Aye.
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 And that passes. Thank you all very much. Item 10B, operations and maintenance. Madam Clerk, can you please provide resolution number for item 10B?
Yes, ma'am. 10B1, no, 10B2, excuse me, is AR 2023-27. 10B3 is FR 2023-28.
Thank you, and I think we have Antonio Hara Mio to present. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Antonio Hara Mio. I'm the Director of Operations and Maintenance under Public Works. I bring here today a request for the approval of the increase of solid waste fees. This is near and dear to my heart, because I actually live in the county, and, you know, I'm putting forth an increase on my own costs, so it's kind of, it's kind of counterintuitive, but here I am. So with the rise of cost of operational fuel and administrative costs, our vendor waste management has requested, and per their contract, they're allowed to do this, they have requested a CPI increase, or consumer price increase, for their services. In the past two or three years, we've had, we've had absorbed those costs because of the pandemic, and we didn't want, you know, incur more cost to our constituents. However, trying to be fiscally responsible and good stewards of the county's money, we felt that this year we had to pass that on to our constituents. So what we're requesting here today is a 6% increase in costs. So what that equates to is for weekly residential roadside collection, we are asking, again, for a 6% increase, which equates to about $1.06 per month. For households that are 10 or greater, such as mobile home, parks, and stuff like that, they have a little bit lower cost associated with that, but that will be $17, I'm sorry, an increase in 99 cents. We do have programs that account for individuals who are on low income or lower income, so that increase will be decreased by half, so about 3%. And that equates to about, for the low-income individuals, that equates to about 30 cents increase per month, and for very low income, that equates to an 18 cent increase per month. In addition, we are also doing an increase for anybody who has an additional cart. We will be associating a 6% increase to that, which equates to about 30 cents increase on that one, as well as for any, any cart that, any additional cart for recycling, again, 6% increase on that. So staff recommends that we rescind the 2019, AR 2019-94 fee structure and put forth this new structure. In addition to what we have here today is our current budget request for an increase of $400,000, again, with the increased costs associated with the operational component of this, you know, we've seen an increase, and a request for an increase of 400,000. This is just our capacity for our budget. So we are enterprise-funded, and so it would not affect the general fund portion of this. So it's just a request to increase our budget of 400,000. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? Vice Chair Barbo.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Antonio Hara Mio. Thank you for the briefing earlier. I did have a question about, and thank you for thinking, for having the foresight and thinking about low-income families and providing that different percentage. What will the outreach look like, some of the families that, because I understand they have to apply for that, like, and so what will the outreach or information so that folks who may qualify for that know that, know where to apply and how to apply, et cetera?
Madam Chair, Vice Chair Barbo, so they, each, each year, they, we have, during the January timeframe, in order to qualify for low income and very low income, they have to fill out a application. And so during that application process, we vet the amount that is their income. And again, those are based off of prior year's tax records. We look at either social security or their disability information, but also during, for their federal taxes. And so the outreach on that would probably, it doesn't, this thing doesn't take into effect, I believe, until the fiscal year, so, and so we still have some time, but we can definitely put it on social media, and we can, we can definitely, we have a listing of individuals who are on our program, so we can send out some communication with them on that.
And I just, thank you for that. And I just imagine that there will send out a notice to all of, you know, to everybody that this change is happening, and if that can just include that also the information on how to apply for the low-income percentage difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments? Commissioner Olivas? Sorry, Commissioner Benson first?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Can you remind me when the last time they, this budget was modified?
In 2019. Commissioner, sorry. Pardon, procedure is new to me, so apologize for that.
It's all good. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I don't like to see increase in fees, but with 20% inflation year-over-year for the last three years, a 6%, especially when the dollar, you know, 20% is different with a house versus one can pick up. So appreciate that update, and thank you for, you guys are doing a great job managing solid waste, and as well as the, you've got your hands full with illegal dumping around the city. We've got to keep working on that, and you guys are doing a great job working, actually in our district, District 4, very close to your own house with illegal dumping, so as well as mine. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Hara Mio, for presenting this. As Commissioner Benson said, it's never an easy thing to see a fee increase, especially in a time when we know that, you know, times are tough for people, and working people are struggling to pay for housing and food and all the other essentials of life, but at the same time, we realize that costs are increasing for fuel and labor, you know, the same people that are working to do this service have to pay for this service, and so, while it's unfortunate, any time that we have to raise user fees like this, it's a necessary fact of what we do. And I do want to commend you for making yourself available, and I took advantage of the briefing that you offered on this, and came away with a much better understanding of what you're doing with the rate structure here to offer low-income and lower-income individuals some rate relief, and I think that that's a very innovative thing for us to be doing, and an important thing for us to be doing, to help those in our community that are struggling the most. And I also want to thank you for taking the time with me to talk about the East Mountain Transfer Center. It was a pleasure to go out there and visit the facility with you a couple of weeks ago. I'm very grateful for you and all the solid waste staff and the great work that everybody at Public Works is doing on behalf of our citizens in our community to address problems like illegal dumping in the East Mountains. We've got the same issues with illegal dumping, and of course, we had some conversations as well about fire protection and the role that the. the transfer center plays and can play in that. So I'm excited about the future and working with you on the transfer center. And thank you for making yourself available. Thank you.
Any more comments? So do I have a motion to approve?
Move, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaramillo. Onto approvals, item 11A has been deferred. So we will move on to item 12, discussion. County Manager, the BHI Senior Manager Pam Acosta and Interim Manager Director Jessica Jaramillo are going to present here.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the commission. We're going to load up. We have a couple of slides to share with you as we give our updates.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
All right. I'm Pam Acosta, Senior Manager with the Behavioral Health Initiative. And it appears when I was doing my research that we haven't given an update for behavioral health, quarterly update since the reorg. So I'm going to give you a brief snapshot of where we are and what we've accomplished over the past year. On our screen here, we're still receiving the 1/8 of 1% grocery receipts tax. We just are in the process of finalizing our fiscal year '24 budget. We're expected to receive, I believe it is, $27 million in grocery receipts revenue for FY '24. Thus far this year, we have allocated our current funding to $22 million and 98,787 in recurring annually. If you look up on the screen, I've broken it down based on each of the different areas of how we've broken down our recurring funding. As you can tell, we've been, a hot topic tonight has been supportive housing. 28% of our budget has been dedicated to supportive housing. The next highest would be crisis service, 24%. And then we have prevention intervention and harm reduction, which is a hot topic for us right now as we discuss fentanyl awareness. We've dedicated $4.5 million. We've also allocated $46 million, I'm sorry, that should actually be $47,843.79 in one-time spending. So those would be capital and startup projects. Some of that would be used from the fund balance. And then we have $7,668,530, which is allocated for future projects, some that we're waiting for the contracts to be executed and a few others that we will be bringing in front of you. I wanted to let you know, there's a few highlights that what we've accomplished over the past few months. When I first came on board in July, we had 42 contracts executed. We're now sitting at 66. Four of those are being managed under the Department of Behavioral Health, and the other 62 are being managed under Behavioral Health Services, under Behavioral Health Initiative Services. We are working with 46 service providers with all of our contracts. And we also, there's two programs that fall under our umbrella, which is the Tiny Homes Village and the Resource Reentry Center. Wanted to touch really quick on both of those to give you some updates. The Resource Reentry Center just finished hiring two social services technicians, so we should be operational to 24 hours mid-March. There, we're waiting for them to come on board. We'll do some training with them and we'll get rolling. So we're excited about that. It's long overdue. And Tiny Homes Village, we currently have 15 villagers. We had three individuals who moved out. We have five individuals on deck with housing vouchers, so it's a matter of locating housing for them. We anticipate being up to 20 villagers by the end of March. I'm sorry, within a couple of weeks, we're actually interviewing those. So we're going to increase by five up to 20 because we also hired some more staff. That was our biggest issue on why we weren't able to fill the house to its capacity. We are very hopeful and optimistic and eager to fill our village to capacity by the end of March. That's our goal, providing we get everybody fully staffed. Those two individuals that were, the three individuals that are hired will also go to cover our swing shifts and our grave shifts. So we'll have support around the clock. A few upcoming projects that we have, that will be coming before you is the school-based mobile health clinics. We'll be discussing some changes. We were granted some funding from Congresswoman Stansbury, and so we'll be presenting that amount to you and an update on the school-based mobile health clinics. The Small Behavioral Health Provider Grant, as we're looking at our portal, we're finding that we asked for $1 million and it may not be enough based on the amount of proposals and requests for funding that individuals are coming to us with. So we'll be bringing that up and maybe asking for an increase of that. We will be discussing the opioid settlement award that has been given to Burnalee County, proposing a budget. We have a couple of conversations and meetings that we have scheduled. We'd like to get some feedback. We've also deferred this to the Addictions Treatment Advisory Board as well, so that they can weigh in on what resources we should, or how we should dedicate this money as well. We'll be bringing before you the multifamily transitional living housing project. I won't go into too much details. I don't want to spoil all the good stuff that's happening there, but that will be coming in front of you as well. There's been some changes. And then the Medicaid assisted treatment at MDC, we'll be bringing that forward as well. We want to make sure that that's a program that's sustainable in the future. We're meeting with the state currently to talk about funding options. I know that there's some bills that have been introduced. We're following those bills as well because we really want to make sure that this is funded or has continued funding. The need has grown. And lastly, the initiatives that we are supporting currently is the fentanyl awareness campaign. Myself and one of my colleagues will be attending the fentanyl awareness tomorrow in Santa Fe. I stand for any questions, or we can wait until Jessica's had an opportunity to present. But thank you for your time.
Why don't you go ahead, Jessica?
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. My name is Jessica Jaramillo. I'm currently the interim director for the Department of Behavioral Services. And as well as what Pam had mentioned, it's been a while since we've given you guys all an update of what has happened on our campus. So we'll start with the first quarter. We actually did a soft opening of our living room program, which is a program for anybody, any, any individuals coming in who are just needing a place to kind of calm down, maybe need a little de-escalation, needing help, kind of figuring out, they're needing to apply for jobs. We've got computers there for them. It is staffed by peer support workers, so that they are there to help and support whatever the clients need. We actually accept pets, too, so we've had a lot of pets that come in. There's actually this one gentleman who brings his dog in every day, who's homeless and brings the dog to be able to sleep for a few hours on our couch. And so it's, it's nice being able to have that space for them to, to be able to feel comfortable. Currently, we've only had 137 clients come in. And now with our, hopefully, ribbon cutting happening in March and our naming of the living room, we're hoping to those numbers to double. As well as our outpatient clinic possibly opening in March, that will kind of bring a lot more clients in as well. So we do plan to expand our hours from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And if we see an increase, then we will hopefully in the future open up seven days a week. In our second quarter, we opened up our observation and assessment, which took over our public need related intervention program. So this program is open 24 hours. So clients who may be highly intoxicated or highly under the influence, they don't quite meet our criteria for detox, they're able to be admitted into there. We monitor them very closely just to make sure they're doing okay. Once they're stable enough, then we move them to our detox. We actually open it up to our crisis stabilization unit as well. So any individual who may be having a mental health crisis, they're able to come in, they're admitted to observation and assessment, they're evaluated by our clinicians, and then they move over to our crisis for a 14-day stay. So that has helped. This also has actually helped with our capacity. So as you know, our detox is capacity pretty much on a weekly basis. And so individuals who are requesting detox, they're able to stay in our observation and assessment and wait for a bed to open, so that we're not turning that many clients away. And then the last is kind of our statistics. So I kind of wanted to do both the first quarter and the second quarter to kind of see the comparison of what we have seen. First quarter, of course, we've had 827 intakes. The second quarter, that increased slightly. Our crisis stabilization intakes have increased. That had to do with our observation and assessment opening to where people, individuals coming out of the streets, they're able to be evaluated and actually get, be able to move into our crisis. As you see, our observation and assessment numbers for crisis, or no, I'm sorry, for quarter one and quarter two has drastically increased. So it's been very helpful having that program open 24 hours. As far as our turnaways, our first quarter was pretty high. And then our second quarter, it has dropped down to 60%, and that is with observation and assessment opening. What also has happened is our staffing increase. And so as you see, our first quarter, we were pretty low with our direct care staff, where we were needing assistance from our case managers, admin staff, as well as management, kind of helping. And sometimes we were having to close because we didn't have enough staff. With the support of Madam County Manager, as well as our Chief Perez, they supported our salary increases, our second quarter, which helped increase our direct care staff drastically. And then, of course, we asked for another increase in salaries for the beginning of our third quarter, as we were still being, a lot of our competitors were taking a lot of our staff. So they supported another salary increase in retention, which has helped drastically. As you see, now in this third quarter, we have staffed up our substance abuse technicians up to 67%, which is huge from the last quarter. We also included our program supervisors in that increase and our mobile crisis team as well, as they were, we noticed that they were being paid pretty, pretty under from what other places were paying. And we're excited for the new outpatient clinic opening and other things happening. So we're excited to do another update for you all at the end of the fiscal year. And that's it.
Thank you, Jessica. Any comments? Vice Chair Barbo.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both, Pam Acosta and Jessica Jaramillo. Thank you so much for your leadership. I literally want to cry looking at these numbers just because it, and I, and I hear, like, everything's been working along and been building along. So I know that, everything takes time. But to see the numbers increase, and I'm just, I think, I want to make sure I understand that also that the observation and assessment sort of approach to things has, is fairly new and is already seeing great.
Oh, yes.
Increases.
Yeah. We, it was originally made for everybody just coming through. But then we kind of noticed that it was delaying individuals going into detox, seeing the provider. And so, you know, we will still admit people into detox, but this was also a chance for, okay, instead of turning people away, they could be in here for, you know, 23 hours and 59 minutes, so that when a bed opens, they're able to move on. And that's been great.
Thank you. I just want to, I don't know if we could pull up that chart again, but right there, like, we see that, see staffing increases, of course, thanks to the funding for those positions, but also the 24 hours has decreased the turnaways by like 50, 60%. So I'm just, I can't be more thankful for y'all just trying all the things to meet the needs. So thank you so much. And I'm excited about the new funding opportunities, Pam, that you talked about and how, and thank you for being transparent about where our funding's going. I'm still excited about the, I know we actually passed the approval of, and I saw it on here, sorry, I'm trying to get myself together. So we had passed before approval of folks that under 500 a budget, for under 500 budget. I still, that RFP's coming.
Yeah, the Small Provider Grant.
The Small Provider Grant. Do we know when that'll be available?
So we're hoping to present at the March 14th Commission Meeting for approval to request an additional $1 million. And if that is approved, we will add it into the RFP, which is ready to go. We would just change the totals.
And that is, that will still be for folks 500?
500 or less.
Or less, okay.
We just want to expand the capacity based on the amount of submissions that we've received recently.
Okay, great. And I've heard, and thank you also, Michael Barn dollars in the audience, that, you know, that vetting process is just running more transparent and smoothly. And so just thank you both, thank you, everybody for putting in.
Thank you.
So I appreciate it.
Madam Chair.
I wanted to mention one more thing that I forgot to mention in our updates. We also wanted to audit ourselves through BHI. And so we completed recently, this was actually not at our request, but we completed an internal budget audit. We were selected as one of the offices that, or areas within the county that underwent an internal audit. We just completed that and they made some recommendations. There was nothing really significant, but their recommendations would to be for us to develop our strategic plan, some specific policies and procedures tied to Behavioral Health Initiative, and then some desktop training manuals. The other one was, another one that was significant was, you know, submitting, working with our providers to make sure that they're submitting their invoices and performance measures timely. That was another one. And then working with our subcommittees to create annual work plans and posting our meeting minutes. We've taken a pause on some of this. We're excited for the working group to hear ideas, to explore where we're at, and then share this internal audit. We also did an evaluation, we requested an evaluation on BHI as a whole, and we just got those final results, the final report back. We're digesting the material in there. But again, there's almost mimicked the internal audit, where they're recommending that BHI formalize our vision and our mission statement, the strategic plan, policy and procedures. And then also recommended the utilization of our performance reports and gathering data, base it on audience, and make sure that we're focusing on outcomes and output, so that we're showing that our funding is making a difference, but not just showing you guys a bunch of numbers of how many people. And so we'll be sharing that with the working group. And I just wanted to mention that as well. We're excited.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to say congratulations to you both as well, and back to Commissioner Barboa's observation of the 60% decrease in turnaway. That's fantastic. There's so many people out there that need the help that when they're coming and they have to be turned away, it's not a good thing. So you guys are doing great work. Thank you so much for really reversing those numbers.
Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both for the work that you're doing. And thank you for coming to us with this report and being so transparent about, you know, your progress and also, you know, highlighting some of the issues that need to be addressed in that, in that audit report. It seems like we're all on the same page from, from the commission to staff, to the charge of the work group to try and address some of those issues. So, well, it's never good to see, like, you know, improvement suggestions. I think it's great that we're all on the same page. It sounds like everybody's rowing in the same direction here. And I feel really good about what that means for the future of the behavioral health systems here at the county. And I want to commend you for your work on the tiny home village. I think that that, from everything that I'm hearing, is improving, not as quickly as everybody would like. But, you know, we realize that staffing challenges are really the Achilles' heel on so many of these projects. But like we see in your report from the cares campus, as those improve, as those numbers get better, we're also seeing better results on the treatment side, on the intake side. So I'm excited about what that might mean, what that may mean. And also at the Resource Reentry Center, which is a really important piece of that nexus between criminal justice and courts and corrections and housing and treatment. And so again, I think that, you know, your vision for getting that fully staffed and moving to different hours and everything is going to be a huge improvement. So I'm very thankful for you bringing this report to us. And I'm very thankful also to the members of our, of our working group who have volunteered their time to try and help address some of these challenges and help everybody do their jobs and just make
here, and thank you for your tenacity and sticking with us through the end of the meeting. We really appreciate you being here. Thanks. And for your work. Commissioner Casada.
Yeah, um, you know, I, you know, my number one priority, moving from APS to the commission with school-based health centers and, you know, it's been, it's been a long journey and I, and I know that, uh, I've been pushing that since, uh, you know, my first year. And what people don't realize, it's really hard when you're working with county and APS and just different entities coming together. That's something we discussed earlier when we're talking about, you know, affordable housing, uh, how it's important that, you know, we have to team up with, with some of these big entities and APS is the big one, uh, for sure. And so I'm really excited about, uh, school-based house, uh, you know, the mobile school-based health centers and, and, you know, I'm excited to hear the data on that because I know the data on when there's one actually in the school and the improvements to not only education, but, you know, health, uh, not, not just physical health, but, you know, mental health is just as important as physical health and, and the health of the community as a whole and not just, just the school. And so I think people, uh, misinterpret what a school-based health center does. It actually provides to the community, not just the students. And so we know that that works in some of the schools in my district, uh, how, uh, I mean, uh, uh, Triskel Heritage is a, you know, that's a prime signing, uh, shining example of what happens when you have all the services in a school, uh, on a side of town that normally doesn't have that high of, uh, of success rates and now they do. And I believe it's part of, they get the whole, that we're, that we're, we're approaching the whole student and not just, you know, what can you memorize and how you can take a test. So thank you for that and thank you for, you know, changing what, uh, you know, what the, what it, what it took to get into the tiny home village. I, I think you both remember my remarks, uh, when they were only at four and I said, uh, I can't even qualify to get into the tiny home village and I'm a county commissioner. I mean, some of the rules were a little ridiculous and so thank you for looking at that and getting that, uh, straightened out and actually putting that in a direction where we're going to be more successful there. The numbers are great. I'm excited about the direction and, uh, you know, uh, we're here to support you in any way we possibly can, so don't be afraid, uh, to reach out, okay? Thank you.
Vice Chair Barboya.
One more thing, does I, are the school, the mobile school-based health centers deployed right now?
No. Um, we, we were just informed that there was a delay, um, I think there's a part called the CASIS, I may be pronouncing that right, um, that they're waiting on. They've pushed our date. We were anticipating April, um, they've pushed it to October, waiting for that part. Um, but the RFP should be coming out this month, so we will be seeking providers. Um, at least we'll have the providers in place.
Thank you. I'm excited for that, too.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Good night.
Well, finally, item thirteen, announcement of the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, the zoning meeting at three PM, and also Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, administrative meeting at five PM in these chambers. If there's no other business, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.